All right, good morning. We are on the record in Hardin County Commissioners Court. Something very important I need to do before we start, Commissioner Pell called the office a little while ago and asked to participate in this meeting by phone, so let me get him on the phone. Would you mind getting that going? Forgot to do that. There may not be anybody there by now.
Hello?
Hey Commissioner, this is Wayne.
Hey Judge, how you doing?
I'm all right. Uh, got you on the phone and we're about to call the meeting to order. We just finished our weather call.
Okay.
All right, and we'll set you down and anything you want to say, you, you, uh, you say.
Well, what I'd like to do on the last item, or if I will, before we adjourn.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank the employees.
E T A T teleconference service.
Absolutely.
Please enter your access code, followed by the pound sign. To join the conference as the host, press stop otherwise.
I know that one.
Your host password was not recognized. Please enter your host password, followed by the pound sign. There are three participants on the call, including you. You are joining your conference as the host, or many of available commands, press star pound.
Thank you Commissioner. Uh, good morning to everybody on the phone. This is Hardin County Commissioners Court. And at this time, all members of the court are present, including Commissioner Pell, who's present by phone. Meeting is called to order. Everyone please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Kirkendall.
Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you in Jesus's name, and Lord, we thank you for the stay. Lord, we thank you for all of our public officials. Thank you for the talent, the education, and the preparedness that, that we all have, Lord, to face what's coming towards us. Lord, we lift up our citizens in the county. Lord, we pray for safety. Lord, we pray for those that have the means to evacuate, Lord, that they would do so. Lord, we do pray for our region today, God. And Father, we pray for mercy and grace. Lord, we pray that, uh, Father God, that we would be, be prepared and respond. And Lord, we ask you to walk with us through this storm. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
I plead allegiance to the fact of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of amendments of the August eleventh, two thousand twenty regular meeting and August twentieth, two thousand twenty special meeting presented by Glenda Austin, County Clerk.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, consider approval of request to cancel all registered claims from August eleventh, two thousand twenty, and approval of the cash statement presented by Deborah McWilliams, County Attorney. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, two hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars and forty cents. In our cash report and general checking account, we have thirteen million, four hundred thirty-four thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars and eleven cents. In tax pool, we have three hundred twenty-one dollars and nine cents for a total in cash funds of thirteen million, four hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
Move the proof as presented.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. McWilliams. Item number five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by Angela Gore, County Auditor. Good morning, Ms. Gore.
Good morning. The pre-approved expenditures for August the twelfth through the thirteenth is five hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred and four dollars and fifty-nine cents. Pre-approved expenditures for August the nineteenth through the twenty-first are thirty-five thousand, nine hundred thirteen dollars and seventy cents.
Ms. Gore, can you unmute, please? There we go. Sorry?
Expenditures for Commissioners Court on August the twenty-third, twenty twenty are three hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. Attached is a list of additional bills for insurance in an amount of two hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred fifty-six dollars and twenty-two cents. The total expenditures in transfers is one million, one hundred forty-one thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and sixteen cents. Gross payroll for August the twenty-seventh is five hundred eleven thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-three cents, and the total transfers for that payroll is eight hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents.
Move the papers again. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Commissioner Pell. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, discussion and possible action on the following fiscal year twenty-one budget request. We'll start with the requests made by Commissioner Precinct One, Commissioner Cooper. Any, uh... All right, I think it's attached to, uh, well, it's attached to the sheet it's supposed to be attached to, right here in this worksheet. Mr. Cooper, you want to go ahead and, uh, discuss your requests for, uh, your secretary?
Uh, yes Judge.
If you'll unmute as well.
My request is to move two thousand six hundred and eight dollars from line item, uh, contractual labor, which is oh one seven six two one four eight six, to salaries clerical, oh one seven six two one one oh five. And that's an increase for my secretary, uh, for taking on the responsibilities of both the airport and the collection station. And according to, uh, the auditor, that will cover fringes as well as, uh, salary.
Thank you, Christian.
Thank you.
Do you hear a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Roberts to approve the requests made by Commissioner Cooper on the wage increase for the road bridge one secretary. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, uh, six B is the Constable Precinct Four, who's here. Good morning, Constable.
Good morning, Detective.
The Constable is requesting a four hundred fifty-six dollar add to his budget for wireless data, as well as an increase in his miscellaneous line item from two hundred to four hundred dollars. That's a total of six hundred and fifty-six dollars. Is that correct? And as I recall, the two hundred dollar request that you're asking for is for postage for any outworn cards?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, who's second to that.
Who's on the second?
Commissioner Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And Ms. Gore, I'll get with you and we'll determine where to move that to make that happen. Next on the list is a request from the County Clerk. I don't see that in our packets. But there was an email from, uh, Ms. Austin to me, and she presented that to us verbally in court the other morning when we had our workshop. Ms. Austin, you want to go ahead and just re-present that to us?
Uh, yes. Uh, Nan Gore just retired, and, uh, well, she will retire at the end of office. And she was making sixteen forty-five, um, an hour, and then when we hire someone, a new employee, they will come in as fourteen forty-two. And so that is a difference of two oh three, and I was asking if I could have my, three of my employees, just a sixty-one cents raise for the difference, because it's still in my budget, so.
That'd be effective October first.
Yes.
So moved. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Roberts to take the two dollars and three cents and, uh, divide it among three employees as requested by Mrs. Austin, at sixty-one cents each. That motion was made by Commissioner Roberts, and seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Is that correct? This, Commissioner Cooper, go ahead.
Maybe, uh, I misunderstood, Ms. Austin. You're wanting to give each one of them sixty-one cents?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, it's three of them. It's just two dollars and three cents difference, and so it's just three of my employees that I can give in sixty-one cents to.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Motion passes four to one. Item D is a request by all six of the J P precincts. Front spreadsheet that we had breaks that down, the, uh, request that was being made. It was a request to increase each of the J P court clerks. And if I'm reading this correctly, uh, two of them make seventeen thirty-one an hour, and the other four make sixteen twenty-three an hour, except for one of them make sixteen twenty-four an hour for some reason. And the requesting is, uh, from each of the J Ps, or at least four of the J Ps, is to request their court clerk up to twenty dollars an hour. If I'm not mistaken, it's around a nine thousand dollar increase to each, uh, to all six of their budgets if that were approved. I had also sent out, uh, some information that I asked the auditor to put together. Ms. McKenna did that for us. I don't see it in our packets, but it has to do with, uh, an option to raise the three court clerks with the longest amount of time. They all have over five years, except for the J P one court clerk. But to raise three of them that are making the sixteen dollars and twenty-three cents, or sixteen dollars and twenty-four cents an hour, up to the same level as the other two court clerks in the J P three and J P six offices, which is seventeen dollars and thirty-one cents an hour. Thank you, Ms. Gore. So Angela, is that the eight thousand two hundred eighty-seven dollars it would cost us to do that if we went with that option?
Yes.
What is the total of the other option if we go that route to raise each of them to the twenty dollars an hour? Do you have that handy, Candace?
Yes, sir.
How much is that with fringes and fringes?
Fifty-two thousand for each.
Right. So, uh, to me, I present that to the court as an option one. The, uh, twenty dollars an hour, I say option two is the second alternative I gave to bring all of them up to the same pay, except for the J P one court clerk. I think Judge Ingram was here. Judge Ingram's, uh, court clerk's been there about eight months. I would definitely say once she's been there longer than that, we would certainly opt to, if we do this, bring her up to the same level as the rest after she's got some tenure. Our option three is to do nothing. So, uh...
Judge, if I could comment on, uh, what you just advised, uh, Judge Ingram about bringing his clerk up. I would like to, uh, make it known for the record that prior to COVID, the judge had asked me to sit down, uh, with Ms. Debbie and go over, uh, salary, looking at all the salaries of all county employees, to see if we could, uh, bring everything in line and maybe do adjustments on that. And then COVID come, and I wasn't able to do it. I was supposed to get with the sheriff as well to meet with him and reference to this. My recommendation is going to be to go with option B on this, and then whenever this is over with, when everything gets back to normal, the judge appoint a committee to look at all salaries, including, uh, new employees or whatever, to make a minimum, uh, new hire for each position amount, and a maximum amount, unless we can get all this in line, and that would be my recommendation on that.
I agree. And I'm, and I'm for option B.
So, was that a motion? I'll put that in a motion.
Second. That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall to raise the, uh, I would go to option B, raise three of the court clerks up to the same as the other two, so all four of those with five plus years of experience would be making seventeen thirty-one an hour. And that's going to be at a cost to, uh, somewhere, we'll have to figure out where to pull that from, eight thousand two hundred eighty-seven dollars and zero cents. Does anybody have a idea where we can pull that money from to cover that? If not, I can work on that and make a recommendation at our next meeting. Which I'll be glad to do.
Judge, I have, I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Is that in addition to the proposed two percent in the budget, or does that include that?
It's in addition to the two percent, so basically that would, uh, bring all five of the J P clerks up to the same level. Two of them make more than the rest, and they all but one have over five years of experience.
Okay.
And that would, uh, bring all, all five, except for Judge Ingram's clerk, up to the same level. And, uh, as Commissioner Cooper said, I'm not sure if you heard him, but I do agree that a committee would be in order for next year to try to, uh, do a better job of, of getting people in line. And, uh, my recommendation or my thoughts are that the J P one clerk should make the same as the rest of them, once she's got a number of years of experience. Doesn't have to be five, but it has to be some.
I agree, and the raise would be, they give immediately, and then October first, they would get the two percent.
No, sir, this would be for the, uh, fiscal twenty-one budget, so we would not, none of this would go into effect until October first.
Okay, okay. I just want to rest your answer.
The, the seventeen thirty-one an hour is the two percent raise, effective October first in the proposed budget. This is a, uh, special request to go higher than that for the J P clerks.
Okay.
Mr. Roberts, did you hear something?
Yeah, no, the only, the only thing I want to say about that is, we, of the four that requested, and I, and it goes back to just like any of the, I said before, whenever, whenever an elected official requests, uh, a raise for their particular office, that's what we need to look at. And I understand trying to get the other one in. I, I just think we oughta, we oughta look at those, the four that did make the request. Uh, they, they made a, they made a special request to us, and the other two didn't. Uh, that's, that's about all I've said about that. I, I just believe that, uh, each, each of us knows our department and, and how it needs to be run, and who runs it and how it works. Uh, that's, that's just my feelings on it.
Thank you, Christian. Any other comments or discussion regarding the justice of the fees court clerks? If not, that motion was made by Commissioner Cooper, I believe, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall to go with option B. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is, uh, six D, and that's a request from the sheriff. As soon as I get back to my place here, and that's to promote two deputies. One is a deputy sheriff promoting to sergeant, and one is a sergeant rank promoting to lieutenant. Any discussion regarding that? Sheriff, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Just, uh...
Can you unmute?
We had looked at the...
Thank you.
We had had some discussion earlier about, uh, some additional job duties for those two employees, uh, and the total amount of fringes is fourteen, I don't have it front of me right here, Judge, but, uh, I think it's fourteen seventy-nine or fourteen ninety-seven. Um, and again, that's some additional job duties, uh, for those two particular, uh, people going forward.
Move to, second. That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
The last item to consider is a request made by the Taxation Center Collector to change a part-time position to a full-time position.
I've moved it through. Second, Ms. Austin.
What's the total cost of that?
Thirty thousand four twenty-nine.
Where is that going to come from?
It's been hit, maybe.
Now, where is it going to pull it from to pay for it? Thirty thousand four twenty-nine, is that right?
It's the first item on your, on your piece of paper. Item number six is the first item.
All right, the motion was made by Kirkendall, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Math, motion passes four to one. Ms. Cook, do you want to add anything?
Well, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
It was coming the last week about opening up issues with these salaries.
Yes, I've been getting lots of calls over the past week.
Mm-hmm.
Lot, lot from the second floor and all of them.
I just found out I think my staff makes less than anybody in the courthouse. I'm just saying. And, and, and some of them in their tenures. Just putting that out. I, I'm not against raises. I, I appreciate this so much, giving us this full-time, because we're, we're going to need that. And I, I did have, I have to make that comment.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I know that all of them are expecting that too, so.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Item number seven, discussion and possible action concerning the job duty, salary, and expense of the Constable Precinct One. Constable Montago here. Uh, at the last meeting, we had a discussion, and the sheriff talked to us a little bit about, uh, the constable over in Precinct One, and the fact that, uh, for the better part of a year, the sheriff himself has been serving all of the civil papers in Precinct One area, uh, that come to his office to be served. Uh, everybody here knows that back in the eighties, I say everybody here knows, if not, we'll make sure everybody knows now, back in the eighties, there was an agreement entered into, it's a gentleman's agreement between the sheriff and the constables and the Commissioners Court, that the constables will serve the precincts, uh, the papers that come to the sheriff's office in each of the J P precincts. And they get a little extra money each year from the Commissioners Court. We, we, I say we, it wasn't any of us here back then that agreed to pay them extra on their salary and their car allowance to handle that duty. Over the years, there's, have been issues with that with different, uh, constables, and, and right now we have this one. Uh, I'll just say that I actually, uh, brought it up to the sheriff probably about a year ago, that we ought to take some kind of action on this. And the sheriff asked me to hold off. He wanted to work with the constable, try to get this worked out. And, uh, the other reason is there was an election coming up, and it just didn't make sense, or, uh, probably didn't, wouldn't look good if we started picking on anybody that was running for office, and I agree with that. Uh, I did not want to do that. At the same time, I'm not happy that the constables put us in this position to even have to be talking about this. I talked to the county attorney, and she's given us some legal advice on this regarding the salary and expenses. It's absolutely one hundred percent, we cannot touch his, uh, salary. During the budget year, we could change that salary, uh, during our budget process. However, that constable did not get re-elected, and he's going out December thirty-first, and if we change the salary for the fiscal year twenty-one budget, the incoming constable has to make that same salary for nine months until the next budget process. So I would be against doing anything at the budget time on the salary for the constable. I don't like that, uh, this court agreed over the years to, uh, add money to the constable's salary and expenses to do extra job duties, and this one's not doing it. Things getting paid, but, uh, I think the, uh, citizens made that decision at election time. As far as the expenses go, uh, I've checked with the county attorney on that. You have an illegal opinion on that, and, and Rebecca, I hope you don't know that man, but I've gotten a second opinion as well on the expenses. And it looks like the expenses are tied to the salary. All, uh, throughout the, uh, local government code, is that correct? Or the Texas government code?
It's the Texas local government.
That one. Uh, it talks about salaries and expenses, and the fact that they are set at the same time. They are also, uh, any grievances that are filed are filed together on salaries and expenses. Legal opinion of the county attorney, and the second opinion that I got on that is that if we adjust the expenses for the constable, it has to be done at budget time during the, during the grievance process to allow that to happen. And if we do that in this particular case, the current constable would, uh, be lower his expenses if we did that for three months, and the new constable coming in would, would, uh, get the same expenses. We would not be able to increase those in January if we, if we wanted to, not legally. So, uh, that's the bad news, in my opinion, because I was ready today to, uh, remove, to vote to remove all of the car allowance, the ten thousand dollars annually that the Constable Precinct One gets. That was my recommendation to the court today, would have been my vote, but based on the legal opinion from the county attorney, and the, uh, second opinion that I received from, uh, through the TAC attorney, I don't think we can do that. So unfortunately, unless the court decides to go against legal opinions, which we can do that, of course, but, uh, I don't recommend it. The constable keeps making his same amount, and, uh, I would ask, I wish he was here. I would have asked him to meet with the sheriff and try to resolve this and start doing the job that he agreed to do. But, uh, he would like to come talk to me. I've reached out to him. Uh, he did reply to my letter that I sent him. He told me that he wanted to meet with us in executive session to talk to us about this. Uh, since he's an elected official, the county attorney advised me that that was not a good idea, because although we can discuss personnel matters in executive session, an elected official's handled differently. So I replied to him with that, and he said, okay, thanks, and I thought he would be here today, but he's not. Mr. Cooper, you have your hand raised?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Judge. I do appreciate the county attorney, and also you getting a second opinion. And, uh, I respect that, and I respect what you said about not voting, but I'm putting it in form of a motion to remove the Constable Precinct One's car allowance for three months until we have a new one here. That would probably die for lack of a second, but if our legal, uh, reference says that we can't do it, then we can't pay, uh, a deputy sheriff part-time for something we're paying someone else. There's no way legally we can do that with taxpayer money. So I'm putting it in form of a motion to remove the car allowance for the Precinct One constable for the remainder of his tenure.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, do I hear a second?
I second it.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts to remove the annual car allowance in the Constable Precinct One's budget effective immediately, and that, uh, it would be taken up again in December. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. Commissioner Pell, I just want to confirm with you that you voted in favor to do that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Item number eight, discussion and possible action to approve an order calling for the November third, two thousand twenty general election, including early voting location and hours, and election day voting locations presented by Glenda Austin, County Clerk. This is our standard order that, uh, we adopt each year for the, uh, or each, every other year for the November general election. Any comments? Do you hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? Ms. Austin, is there one change on the, uh, election day voting, which is at, uh, Silvy City Hall? Is that the only change from our normal voting location? Yes, ma'am.
No, it's, it's still going to be a change.
Okay, early voting would be at Silvy City Hall, and that's the only change. Other than that, everything is the same?
Yes.
And you've got some signs that'll go up at the community center that tell people to go to City Hall to vote?
We will have.
Yes, ma'am. Um, let's just real quick, while we're under discussion, talk about early voting here at the courthouse. There'll be three weeks of it in the county courtroom. During the, uh, runoff elections back in July, we closed off that section down there due to COVID, because the Secretary of State and the Governor's Office says that we can't make people wear masks to vote. Most of the people did wear their mask and followed, followed all the COVID protocols, so it's my recommendation that we don't close that off. I still want people to come in those, uh, doors down there for election day, I mean, for, uh, early voting and election day. But if somebody comes through the main entrance, as long as they're following the COVID protocols, we'll, uh, go on through down to the, to the courtroom and vote. And that makes it easier on voters, as well as everybody here at the courthouse who needs to go to purchasing and probation and, uh, floodplain, and those officers to come into the main court, part of the courthouse. So, uh, does anybody have any other recommendation on that other than what, uh, Glenda and I have talked about? Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, discussion and possible action to approve a plan for District Clerk's Technology Fund for the preservation and restoration of the District Clerk's records, presented by Dana Hall, District Clerk, and she's here virtually with us. Ms. Hall, did you have anything you wanted to say about that? We had our public hearing just a little while ago regarding this, and it was presented, uh, the only change is just, uh, to change the, uh, term to this year from last year.
So moved. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number ten, authorization to submit an invoice for payment in the amount of one thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-three cents to Silver, Silver Motor Company for vehicle repair requested by the sheriff.
So moved. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number eleven, permission to submit bids, solicit bids, I'm sorry, for overlaying approximately twelve feet by two thousand four hundred and fifty feet on Buck Gilmore Road located in Precinct Two, requested by Commissioner Kirkendall.
So moved. Second.
That motion by Commissioner Pell, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item twelve, discussion and possible action regarding a refund and exceeding the five hundred dollar limit for account numbers zero zero five two four zero, zero 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 seven zero zero, and zero one three eight zero zero dash zero eight zero two two six for the tax year twenty nineteen, and account number zero 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 three four dash zero two zero six six five for the tax years two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. We have a memo from Ms. Cook. That total amount is five thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, which is seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Thank you.
Item thirteen, consider and possibly approve a request... Number thirteen, consider and possibly approve the request to appoint Sylvia Trevino as a reserve deputy constable for Harden County Constable's Office Precinct Four pursuant to Texas Local Government Code section eighty-six point oh one two, requested by the constable Cory Jeffco. Good morning, Constable.
Good morning.
Thank you, Jim, for coming up.
Uh what we're gonna do here, we have an expectation of adding another deputy to the contract over to the school district due to the COVID stuff that's been kind of kind of in the pan of us right now. So I wanna go ahead and bring her on since I have opportunity to get her to add to this, make hiring her full-time at the school district once the contract expires.
And that'll be similar to the current deputy constable in the school, we'll pay that a hundred percent, correct?
A hundred percent, nothing to come from the county, we just just contract.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Constable. Item fourteen, permission to solicit statements of qualification for engineering services pertaining to projects for the community community development block grant mitigation fund known as CDBG MIT, requested by Ms. Young, floodplain administrator. Good morning.
Uh this is a a little over a two billion dollar grant that we've already uh hired the grant administrator for and we just need an engineer to start uh looking at projects.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number fifteen, discussion and possible action to approve and accept Rock Creek Ridge subdivision phase four into the county road and bridge maintenance system located in precinct three. This is requested by Commiss uh by Amanda Young, floodplain administrator. Commissioner Pelt, do you have anything you wanna say regarding that?
I move to approve it.
All right, have a motion by Commissioner Pelt, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number sixteen, present resort results of bids submitted for disaster emergency debris removal services and possibly award a successful bidder. If approved, permission for county judge to sign agreement for disaster emergency debris removal services. Mr. Sims, purchasing agent.
Good morning.
Before you present that, do you think that we need to take action on this today since we have a storm coming very soon? Or do you recommend that we table that?
Our current contract expires on September the first, so we can.
Have you talked to them about an extension?
To Ashtray, we have an extension. Um I'm not sure we can extend it since we've already picked this one up for bidding.
Okay.
I will move to table.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Pelt to table item number sixteen. And uh I guess what we can do if we find out that can't be extended, we can have a special meeting on Monday, the thirty-first to take action on this line item. Does that sound good to the court?
Yes.
Does that sound good to Ms. Walton, does that sound like a thing to do here?
Yeah, I I think um if we have an event occurring, we need to make sure we notify Ashtray and send our notice to proceed as soon as possible to make it to forty-eight hours.
Okay.
We can do it before it ends on September the first.
And in the meantime, would you check with uh Ashtray, make sure that we can extend that agreement? And of course, work with Mrs. Walton on that. And if it looks like we need to take any action, we can do so. And if we're not able to get here on the thirty-first, we'll hopefully have internet access and we'll do it virtually. And we'll uh know that no later than noon on Friday, so we can set that meeting for Monday. Bless you, Sheriff. Sound good to everybody? Any other discussion? All in favor of favoring item number sixteen?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number seventeen, present results of bids submitted for overlaying approximately twenty feet by four thousand thirty-two feet on GW Jones Road and twenty feet by two hundred seventy feet on Old Bassin Road, eighteen feet by one hundred feet on Wilkins Ranch Road, all located in precinct three and possibly award a successful bidder.
Bids are open in the purchasing.
Can you unmute, please? Thank you.
Bids are open in the purchasing department front office on August fourteenth, twenty-fourth, F C P N, Russell, Elka Cemetery and Drew Whitmore Plaza. We received two bids, one from C N Construction for two fifty square yard and L D Construction for two forty-five a square yard.
That's Pelt. Move to approve uh low bid?
Aye.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Pelt to approve the low bid, which is L D Construction at two dollars and forty-five cents a square yard, is that correct? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Ms. Sims. Item number eighteen, setting a third public hearing regarding the proposed tax rate for two thousand twenty. I uh recommend that we set it for September the eighth at nine thirty. And once again, the reason we're having a third one is to meet the new statute, which requires that we set the tax rate within seven days after the public hearing. It can also be set at the public hearing. Since we had our second one today, there's more than seven days between now and September the eighth, which is the date that we plan to set the tax rate. So that proposal by me is to just have a third public hearing to meet the statute. And that's September the eighth at nine thirty AM during our uh public hearing on the budget. And that's a motion.
Second.
Have a motion by the sheriff, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item nineteen, discussion only of any item not on the agenda without taking any action. We'll start with the commissioners and I'm gonna start with Commissioner Pelt, who told me he wanted to speak during this item. Go ahead, Commissioner Pelt.
Judge, I appreciate it. Vicki and I wanted to express our appreciation to all of those who have been praying for me and for her. The number of cards and texts has been outpouring and overwhelming. Through God and prayer, I am whole and doing very well. It's been a difficult time, but I'm gonna make it. And again, our heartfelt thanks to all those who have thought of us. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm glad to hear that you're doing better. Any other commissioners? Any official that's here in the audience?
I'll tell everybody, be safe with this hurricane coming, uh take care of your families and uh and like I said, be safe. Uh do the smart things. It looks like it's gonna be really bad.
The state is twelve thirty. At noon, I will have a conference call in this room uh with the state. That won't be on Zoom or anything, we'll do it right here. Anybody who wants to participate in that, you're welcome. At twelve thirty, I will have a call with the mayors and we'll discuss mandatory evacuation of the county. As I said earlier, in case anybody might have missed that, uh there it's already effective, I just hadn't had time to type it and get it out. I'll try to do that before noon. There will be a mandatory evacuation of all low-lying areas of the county. Mr. Thomas, see, I just realized you're here. I don't recognize everybody with their mask on, but uh that will include Rose Hill, Rose Hill Acres. And I don't know if you talked with the mayor yet or not, I will do that ASAP, but uh I definitely think it's in order. And if y'all disagree, let me know and we'll talk about it before I get it official, but I I guess I've really kind of already done that. There will be a mandatory evacuation of all low-lying areas. That's gonna include basically everything from Serra Lake to the county line of one oh five, uh Pinewood, Country Wood, all those neighborhoods in that area along the Pine Island Bio, Rose Hill Acres, Cooks Lake Road, uh just about all of the Keith Road area. Alvin, what am I missing?
That's gonna back on up to Village Creek for you too, Alvin. So I know you said Lomerton, but I mean when it backs up on all of this, it's gonna back up on you.
We'll have uh we'll get those new maps from Roger. He said that they may have already come to our email, as soon as I get them, I'll send those to y'all so that we see what that storm surge.
That's based more on the surge though.
Yeah, the surge.
I mean eventually it might cause, but I don't think it would affect anything I have right now with the surge.
Okay, we were saying Rose Hill Acres, we still have Timber Creek, Rolling Hills. I think they need to be made aware that the it's come back there.
Everything off Keith Road.
Everything off Keith Road, yeah, not just Rose Hill Acres.
And then again, the uh mayors and I will talk at twelve thirty, if not before then, and there may be a decision made to uh order a countywide evacuation and if so, I'll get that out ASAP, give everybody as much notice as possible. I think the roads are already pretty well full, so my recommendation is to pack up and get ready and take your time. And uh maybe the traffic will be lighter this evening or early in the morning and that would be the time to leave for anybody who's leaving. My opinion and of course, if you think that's a different opinion, we're all glad to hear that. Does that sound good to you?
When are we gonna discuss the courthouse?
Sir?
Courthouse.
What's that?
When are we gonna discuss the courthouse?
Uh we can do that right now as well.
Just just one of them.
I would say that uh the courthouse will be closed starting tomorrow morning and be closed the rest of the week. That's my thoughts on that, I'd like to hear what the commissioners' thoughts are.
I agree, I understand, Judge. I agree also.
Any department head who has an employee that wants to leave today, I think you oughta let him leave. But as far as the courthouse closure and countywide closure, with the exception of essential personnel, I think that should happen starting tomorrow. Ms. Ford, you have anything? Okay. Anybody, Ms. uh McWilliams?
Yes, sir.
Yes, you are essential.
My Thursday is paid.
And so are your two ladies, we'll be essential.
And uh my checks are ready. The file has been uploaded for direct deposits.
Okay.
I have twenty-five paper checks.
If you would like to, if it if your office is gonna leave, if you would like to leave those with my office, I'll make sure people can get those.
I'll be here, but I didn't know whether you wanted, since you're gonna close the courthouse, if you want me to go ahead and give them to the department heads or do you want me to?
I think that'd be fine, what do y'all think?
They're dated for Thursday, but I don't want anybody on the road on Thursday trying to get here to get a paper check.
Can they deposit those tomorrow if they're dated Thursday?
I'm not sure that they can.
Cause you're gonna be looking at all, I I know our credit unions are closing down today. Uh you're gonna look at all the banks and credit unions closing.
You know, if you want me to put that paper check in their hands this afternoon, I can do that. It'll be up to them, but um I said they're dated Thursday, I just hate everybody to be
I agree.
Trying to get over here on Thursdays.
I say give them to them, if their bank will take them, great, and if not, they can cash them somewhere wherever they end up being, uh where there's a place open where they can cash them. You agree?
I will be here though.
I have one employee in my office that has a paper, so tell them by five today they need to get with you.
If they're ready, why don't you go ahead and give it to them? Do you mind? Do you mind taking this to you?
Are you are you gonna also go ahead and deposit, make the deposits in the bank account?
It's already done.
It's already done, okay.
The the file's already been uploaded.
Okay.
You know, it's it's effective for Thursday, but it is in place. It's already in place.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
Anybody else uh here have any comments, any anything on the discussion item? Anything on the storm? Sheriff.
Judge, if I could, just a reminder, we're gonna have a lot of off-site, out-of-area people coming here to the courthouse. If we can make sure we adjust the doors, if there's time locks or how they can get in or whatever on this main, just keep that in mind.
Good idea.
There'll be some coming in tonight and so I'll do it in the day tomorrow, tomorrow night.
Perfect, thank you. Has somebody moved to adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Judge, could I talk to you just a minute?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Hold it up the speaker.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, go ahead.